Okay Chairman.
Okay, thanks Tony. Okay, good afternoon everybody. Welcome to yet again another special meeting of the Cedric County Board of Commissioners. Today Thursday, November 5th at 1:30. I believe this is available for view from YouTube and Facebook live and will be posted as well to be viewed afterwards. So with that, we'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk?
Roll call Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Chairman Meister.
Present. Before we get into new business, Tom, I'll kind of let you introduce. We have some guests and you might make some comments. Obviously, we've got Dr. Minz.
Sure Chairman, if the Clerk could go ahead and call Item A, that is what they're here for, so it is.
Oh, okay. Madam Clerk, first item please.
New business, Item A, COVID-19 update.
Okay.
Now, thanks Chairman for that. So it's been a tough week with the coronavirus. The numbers seem to be going the wrong way, so we thought it appropriate today for the Board of Health for a special meeting to have Dr. Minz on hand to just kind of talk about the numbers and what he perceives as maybe some of the drivers of this are. We also are fortunate to have Dr. Antonio's from Via Christi and Dr. Ebersol from Wesley on Zoom call today as well to talk about hospital status at this time. And all of these doctors have appointments at 2 o'clock, so we have to keep this moving and surely allow some time for Commissioner questions. But with that, Dr. Minz, I think we'll let you start it, sir.
Okay, well, thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm sorry we have to come and give you this kind of news, but the numbers are up considerably over the last four to five weeks. There's been a gradual increase every week and our latest numbers ended last week are 19.5% of our tests are positive and in addition to that, our hospital numbers are at an all-time high. I will let Dr. Ebersol and Antonio's talk more about the hospital issues and I'm just going to talk a little bit more in detail about the general situation we have in the community spread. I cannot give you a precise answer why the number of cases is up. I think it's multifactorial, but I will say it's the same problem they're having in the rest of the state, if not the entire country. I've talked to many counties in this state and they're all saying the same thing. Numbers are going up and it's becoming real challenges for the hospitals in their communities as well as for them to know what to do. The cause is, as I said, multifactorial. It may be partly due to environmental factors. We know that most respiratory viruses are more common in the colder weather as people are staying in their houses more and spending more time indoors. We don't have any previous experience with this virus, so I don't know if that is a factor for it, but at least for most of the respiratory viruses, we see a lot more transmission in the colder environments. However, we know despite the environmental changes, this virus is transmitted largely through human contact. The virus cannot get into another human unless another human touches that human or sneezes or coughs or speaks close to their face, so it takes humans to transmit this. I would speculate, I have no proof, but I would speculate that opening the schools was a component of why the numbers are up. It's not just the schools themselves, it's also the extracurricular activities, the sports, the spectators of the sports are leading to more human contact and probably contributing to this. However, I'm not criticizing the schools. I think they're doing a yeoman's job in trying to figure out how to keep the schools open and keeping the transmission to a minimum. So I'm not suggesting the schools close. I think many of them are taking this seriously and they're trying to make good decisions about when to go to remote learning when they see the numbers in their schools being up. I do feel like opening the schools probably was a component of it and that is verified by the fact last spring when the schools were closed, we were able to get the numbers down quite a bit. I believe that upcoming holidays have potential to even increase the numbers more because we will have families getting together. There's a lot of asymptomatic carriers out there, people around the dinner table at Thanksgiving who have it and don't even know they have it. As the virus is transmitted human to human, either directly or through touching or inhaling droplets, we need to think about what interventions we could do that would decrease the frequency of that happening. Now, we know that countries where they have done social lockdowns and even in our community last spring when we had a form of a lockdown, that you can get the numbers down, but I'm not sure that any of us want to incur that kind of economic and social cost at this time. I think there may be some limited areas where we could suggest closings, but I don't think we want the general lockdown like we did back then. Not because it doesn't work, but it has a high cost to it that was still to some extent we're suffering from. So how can we encourage to reduce transmission by changing behavior with a higher compliance rate than we have now? I think there's generally pretty good compliance with the mask order, but it's not as good it could be. I have reports from friends of mine and individuals and coworkers who have attended weddings in which no one is wearing masks at the wedding reception. Maybe the wedding party is, but for the most part, the guests are not wearing masks and that's not an isolated situation. I think we could address, we need to address some way we can discuss with people who plan events and how someone can take responsibility to remind people to wear masks at these large events. We may even have to restrict the size of events that we will allow or condone. I think that is a real possibility is reducing the size of events. I have discussed with the Health Department officials and some of the doctors in town and trying to do more community education. Maybe having our doctors actually get on TV panels and share with them some of the horrors they have seen in the ICU, some of the tremendous personal burdens that this disease has placed on the people who did get sick from it. And while we know that not everyone gets severely ill, many people have a mild illness, we cannot tell with certainty who is likely to get the severe illness and who is not. We know some general risk factors, but they're imprecise. We have a lot of, we have a number of people who don't have any of those known risk factors and got very ill and even some passed away. I think we need to encourage businesses to be more careful to restrict patrons who do not want to obey the order. I have been in some retail areas where they are very clear about it. Don't come in and if you do come in, we'll ask you to either put a mask on or leave. And I've been in other retail sites where there's nothing, there's no intervention. People walk in and out without masks and nothing's said. Again, increasing human-to-human contact and transmission of this virus. I also think we need to engage the people who plan events in this community, whether it's at the Interz Bank Arena or it's at the other places where we have sporting events. They need to take a large responsibility in enforcing compliance. We did not have the staff at the Health Department to do that. The people planning these events need to take some responsibility and some are doing a good job. I'm afraid it's not uniform. And again, I think we need to do what we can to have more educational programs on why this is important. I think some of the things we have on TV, it just says, "Wear a mask, social distance." I don't think we're doing as good a job explaining why this is important, why this disease has caused a lot of problems, even for the people who recover and get out of the ICUs, they're having sequelae, they're having long-term events happen with their health that is not good. And maybe our other two physicians can talk about it a little bit more. Because of our limitation in time, I will stop there and ask the other two physicians to make any comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Minz, and I think we're eager to hear from the Dr. Ebersol and Antonio's and then we will ask some questions. So I don't care which one wants to go first.
Dan, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Minz, and thank you for inviting us to speak here. I did want to just, first of all, just mention that the audio is a little bit weak on my part hearing the room, so I apologize if you guys ask a question and I have to ask you to repeat it because I'm having a little bit of a hard time hearing the room. But let me just share with you, echoing what Dr. Minz has shared, is that we have seen in the hospitals, an increase in the number of hospitalizations. In fact, it's been going for the last couple of weeks and we obviously, as a hospital, have been preparing for this for a long time. We've been trying to, we have been through this now for several months and specifically since the spring, have developed plans to have available units that we have expanded in order to be able to take care of patients. The fact of remains is that the number of increase in hospitalizations is just concerning because the reality is there is no ceiling to this. What our capabilities allow us to do is to take care of the patients, but they're eventually start having constraints either when it comes to staffing or when it comes to just the time it takes to take care of the patients. The good news is that we are executing on a plan that we already had prepared. Our PPE looks okay and some of the issues that we early on had faced back in the spring, maybe we're not facing when it comes to worrying about the number of ventilators. Right now, it's really mostly worrying about the ability to have adequate staffing. So as a result, we've taken swift actions and we are bringing in nurses and other staff to assist us from within Ascension Hospitals outside of Kansas. And we're also trying to get assistance from other nursing agencies to come and do help. I want to remind everyone that the hospital numbers are generally never static and so by the time I give you a number of how many we have in the hospital, two hours later it could have changed. But on the aggregate, the curve is leaning upwards and that's really what the trend that is concerning to us because, like I said earlier, there really is no ceiling. We're glad that we took some of the actions that we did back in the spring, which is we honored every offer we did before to nursing or other staff. We did 100% paid continuation to all our staff because we kind of were concerned and anticipating that in the fall, a rise in the case would occur and then here it is indeed, it has happened. And so some of those actions that we took early are paying off now. Nonetheless, we want to make sure that the community knows that we're not in the same situation that we were a month ago. In fact, we're about almost a triple the number of hospitalizations with COVID-19 than we were about four weeks ago. I want to comment a little bit about who are our patients. It's our community at about 75 to 80% are Sedway County residents. The rest are from Butler County and typically there's small percentages of 1% or 2% that are from Kansas. We generally have not really had patients from outside of our community. And so the people who are getting sick, who are taking care, we are taking care of are our community and we are going above and beyond to try to take care of them and we are here for them and we are here for you. So I think kind of to echo a little bit what Dr. Minz said, what we're doing today is to raise awareness that it is real. The numbers have increased, they are increasing at a pace or at a rate that make me concerned because it potentially doesn't have a top. So again, the education that is needed will be helpful and getting people to follow the advice of Dr. Minz will be helpful for everybody involved because we're here to take care of our community and we will continue to do so. And one last note that I'll say just because I want to recognize and just show my deep appreciation to our staff. They are spending 12 hours a day in full garment, wearing protective equipment, masks and taking care of our patients with high level and degree of dedication and I just want to thank them and I think the community appreciates them. And so I'm very grateful to be working in an organization where I'm surrounded by such passionate people.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Antonio's, for sharing. And for the audience, Dr. Antonio's and Dr. Ebersol, who will be talking next. Dr. Antonio's is the Chief Medical Officer at Ascension Via Christi and then, and Dr. Ebersol is also the Chief Medical Officer at Wesley Healthcare. So with that, we'll go to again, Dr. Ebersol.
Thank you, Chairman. Appreciate the opportunity as well to address the Commission today. Appreciate Dr. Minz's comments. I'm joined in the room by Dave Stewart from our marketing and communications team, so I'm going to leave my mask on to protect him and each other in the room. So somewhat of a similar, very similar story to what Dr. Antonio's described here at Wesley Healthcare. We've seen essentially doubling in our number of hospitalized COVID-positive patients over the last 13 days and we've enacted some of the first steps of our COVID-19 surge plan, which entails moving into some additional units for our ICU patients as well as our med-surg patients and that took place earlier this week. So you know, another challenge that we also have is around staffing and this has been the challenge of a national nursing shortage colliding with a global pandemic of our, hopefully the only one of our lifetime. And so we've been working with our tremendous team of nurses, respiratory therapists, other staff, support staff here at Wesley to maximize their abilities to care for our patients, to pick up additional shifts and providing incentives to do that. And excited to share that so many of our staff are going above and beyond to work additional shifts, to work additional hours while they're putting themselves at risk in the front line on caring for these very critically ill COVID-19 patients. We also are trying to leverage some traveling nursing resources as well and have had out multiple requests, but that, I think some of the, both systems are experiencing the same challenges that it's around the country where we're all vying for the same pool of nursing, particularly nursing staffing at this time. Our demographics, just to speak to that briefly, have been a little bit different. I think we have about 2/3 of our patients so similar from Cedric County and then a smattering of the other counties this past week up to about 10 other counties. We've seen a pretty significant influx of patients from out of state, Oklahoma and Texas. We've had to actually put some guardrails around that, particularly those from Texas, which is not, those patients from Texas, which is not in our normal geographic referral base. And we are, do provide some services that other regional facilities do not have, particularly around our ECMO program. So we're trying to balance, we want to be able to serve our local community, our county, our state and regionally, but trying to find that balance of that and then keeping our staff healthy and safe as well. It really, just any efforts that we can to continue to educate the public around the three things that we've been talking about for, going on for months now in terms of the wearing masks and social distancing, you know, it, those are the simple things, but they really do pay off in keeping the transmission of the disease down, which then, you know, keeps our hospitalizations down. So I know there's a lot of fatigue around wearing masks, but I think whatever, in a unified way that the two health systems, Dr. Minz and the county and then the county commission and other elected officials, we can have a unified message to the public because it is, along with Dr. Antonio's, I'm very concerned of the future, of what is yet to come. We're being taxed and stressed at this point already with our staff and what we can do. Been able to continue to provide excellent care, but want to be able to continue to do that and keep our patients and our staff safe and healthy.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Ebersol. Remind the Commission, we've got a few minutes to ask some questions and when you're asking, because they can hear, make sure we're talking directly in the microphone. Could I ask a quick question? I'll start. I know you've got the surge plans that you've referenced on our, on preparation on our Monday hospital calls. There is some questions about, back in the day in April, neither hospital was doing selective surgeries. Or you're not in that stage yet, but it's close or is that something you can comment on?
So I'll just answer that real quick. You know, we as specifically St. Francis, where we take care of the majority of our COVID-19 patients, we perform medically necessary surgeries for the vast majority of what we do. We're generally not a surgical center that provides the types of surgeries that generally can be delayed. And so we, however, despite that, we're still looking and working with our medical staff to examine every day how we can manage our capacity. We're, like I said, I think earlier, we've been fortunate about the ability to manage patients and we have succeeded at doing that because of our execution on the surge plan. But you know, your specific question is a little bit, I think, in relation to what might be feasible in a different type of setting where things could be a little bit more elective. They're somewhat less elective within our setting, not completely, but that's generally what we face is patients who need care and that's what we do. With that said, we're talking with our medical staff on a daily basis about ability to manage our flows and so that's the status of what we're in now. I think as I look into the next couple of months, I'm just thinking about where does this graph go in the community? If I look at the numbers of the positive cases in Sedway County, they have almost doubled in one week, so one can anticipate that they could double one more time in the next week. So that's a concern.
Okay.
For Wesley, we have continued to do elective surgeries at this time. We engaged our Surgical Governance Committee earlier this week and the committee, moving forward, as we've had some challenges with our own OR staff as well as other staff, you know, themselves getting COVID, we, our surgical section chair is reviewing these cases on a daily basis and if there are opportunities where there's truly an elective case that could be delayed, we will do that if necessary, but at this time, we're continuing to do all inpatient and elective surgeries without interruption.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz has a question or comment.
Thank you, doctors, for being here today. My question is around staffing. You both say that you have asked for traveling nurses. Since you both are part of larger healthcare systems, do you see that within your healthcare system that hospitals around the country and in your system are asking for traveling nurses? How many traveling nurses are there around the country?
That's a very good question and I think it, you know, specifically, so we've been fortunate to be able to get some assistance from within our own health system across the nation. However, that's not enough and we are seeking traveling nurses from agencies. And we have had several who are already here and they're boots on the ground, they're working and more are coming. But you're correct to point out that if every state, and this is what we have somewhat witnessing, if every state and every hospital elsewhere where they are seeing a surge does the same demand, there is potentially a, going to be some sort of degree of competition on the same resources. I'm not really an expert in that field to tell you what is the total pool, but theoretically, I can imagine that if everybody's demanding the same resources, there could potentially be a strain there as well.
Completely agree. I would just add that given some of the serious challenges of getting traveling nurses, we have really doubled our efforts around our own staff and being creative with them around what different, you know, additional shifts that they can work and providing appropriate, you know, compensation for their time and for their efforts and work here.
And real quickly, I know you have to go, but the effect that it's having on your current staff members, can you just speak to that real fast? I know they're caring for the sickest patients they've ever seen in their lives. Can one of you just quickly speak to the effect this is having on your current staff members right now?
Thank you. I want to thank you for bringing that up and that is a very important question. You know, it's, we should not underestimate the fatigue, the both physical and really probably more emotional fatigue that occurs with all staff. Nurses, respiratory therapists, physicians, even physicians in training. The fatigue is because they're obviously working long hours, but also because I think, and you might have heard about this from some of the stories that we have shared, they're witnessing a higher degree of morbidity and people who are sick and people who are dying. We all in healthcare are to some degree used to dealing with death, but it is something completely different when the rate and the degree is much higher and it is unfortunately with COVID-19. So we are trying to do wraparound services and support our staff who provide them with anything they need from emotional and physical support in order to acknowledge all the fatigue that they're going through. So thank you for bringing that up because it is an important issue.
Commissioners, this is Dr. Minz. I apologize, I have another meeting at 2:00. I would certainly be open to any questions you want to submit to Mr. Stoltz and whatever, but I tried my best to squeeze this meeting in, but I had another one at 2:00 that I have obligations to go to. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Minz, and I think we all were, I noticed we're all taking notes on your introductory comments about where we need to help focus some attention and some efforts, so appreciate that. Out of respect for time, I don't really see any other questions from the Commissioners. We could talk for another hour, as you know, but I can't thank Dr. Ebersol and Dr. Antonio's for joining us and I hope that maybe we can continue to update the community, especially if we, well, even if we have good news, that'd be a fast meeting, but if we have accelerated worsening news, then maybe it's something we need to continue to do if you find yourself available. So with that, thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we will let them Zoom out of here and we will move on with our meeting, Tom.
Very good. Thanks again, doctors. I think Adrian wanted to talk just a little bit, give an update on, Commissioner Dennis had some questions about track tracing that I think she wanted to talk about, so.
Okay, one second. Commissioner Cruz has a comment.
So I just, I mean, for the community at large, I don't, I can't speak for other Commissioners, but people are asking what's going to happen and I just wonder if we can address that question, whether we're looking at additional restrictions? And we had this discussion with physicians today, but what are the next steps? And so Chairman, I wonder if you can help explain to the community, you know, what we're going to be taking because we're seeing our hospitals full today and at what point, if we do plan to take something, will that happen?
Well, we're under a current order from Dr. Minz. I think he was wanting to take some feedback and continue to understand what he was doing. some feedback and continue to understand what he was doing. Obviously, he mentioned we maybe could help with event planners and community education and encourage businesses to recognize what's going on. That's what I picked up from him. If he wants to propose further restrictions, I believe that'll be up to the health officer, is my observation.
So unless a special meeting is called, we're not doing anything until next week?
Well, we can have special meetings. We have them tentatively scheduled, and we can also have a special meeting any time. If Dr. Menz prefers to have one sooner than our next one, then absolutely, we can have one.
I think, I think Dr. Menz at least wanted a chance to talk with you today. And I think that he has invited you all, that if you have questions or specific questions, just based on what you heard today, that he's open to your questions. These guys are all busy, the doctors are all busy with pandemic issues. But they're all open to questions. They always email back when we ask them anything. So if the commission has any questions, I think you are welcome to ask them of him. He may revisit, and he doesn't require us to hold him up, he may revisit his order, current order, and bring in further restrictions, which of course, we bring back to the commission. And that could happen tomorrow or early next week. I think he's trying to assimilate all the information that he hears, not only from the commission, but also from his fellow doctors in the community and what's going on in the hospital. So next steps could be, Dr. Menz could come back forward with an amended order, which the commission would hear. Or, and I think we, I think part of the message I heard today is we need to market this. Part of the strategy is what we did here today, so that the community can hear from the hospitals, the seriousness of this, and hopefully voluntarily through community effort, try to bend this curve back down or get it to flatten. So it's, I don't know what the next steps are, but it could be a number of things. And hopefully, we begin to see numbers change. So.
Okay. Adrian, welcome to the meeting.
Good afternoon, commissioners and Board of Health. So I'd like to address a couple of things. One, that there's questions about the differences between the state data and then our data. The state counts suspect cases with antigen. So if someone tests positive with antigen, they put those in their overall case numbers. We don't put those in our numbers. We're following what CDC calls a positive case, and that's through the PCR or nasal and now saliva testing. The one data point that we do have this similar data is the percent positive. And that percent positive are the new cases over the number of new tests that occurred during that week. When you, if you pull up the state's number today on the percent positive and pull up our data, they're not going to be the same number more than likely because it depends upon when that data is pulled. So there's so much, so many cases, so many labs coming in at various times, that it really depends upon when KDH updates their information as to when we do, but it should always be within a percentage or lower. So we do pull our data in the same way. You'll notice that KDH already has this week up on their report when we haven't gotten through Saturday yet. So they just jump on it right away where we will have this week next Tuesday, because every Tuesday, we will update our metrics graph on the previous week. And that data is always really volatile because there's still a lot of tests that we're getting in. And then we update any information on there every Friday. So that's a little piece about the differing data with the state and local. And then the other, and part of what makes this so difficult as far as what do we do next, is that House Bill 2016 was put into effect, summer, late summer, and that really has tied a lot of, well, it has severely tied health departments' hands because it restricts the information that we can get from a case in regards to close contacts. So previously, and it's always been a choice, but the investigators are trained and skilled at asking questions. And if someone says, well, I don't really know if I want to provide that information, then they would be able to explore what their hesitation was. And maybe it was that they thought their name was going to be shared, or somebody would get in trouble, but they were just able to spend time finding out, you know, what their hesitation was, and then educating them on the whole process. Well, with House Bill 2016, if someone says, eh, I don't really think so, we have to stop. That's it. So prior to House Bill 2016, I don't have the number, but I'll just say we could easily get over 50%, maybe 70% of all cases to provide information about their close contacts. And they would even provide, you know, the contact information. Well, just as an example of the effect of this, so between 9/27, between September 27th and October 31st, out of the 3,764 cases we have had during that time, 518 were willing to give us even generalized information. And we're going to, we have the data team digging down, and they're going to be able to give us a report by next Tuesday so we can give more information about this. We're looking at the data. And so of those 518, or 14% of all positive cases, 518% said that they were at large gatherings. And 66 of those 518 were willing to give us a little bit more information. But this is part of what we have to dig down into, and they specified church services, weddings, college and high school, athletic events, parties. So globally, and we also know that not all clubs and restaurants are adhering to the 50% capacity. There are a lot that are not. So we're just going to have a snippet, we're going to have a very small amount of data to share, just because people say, I'm not telling you, I'm not going to tell you. Sometimes they'll say, you know, I'll go ahead and tell people myself. And we are appreciative of that because then their close contacts know that they need to house quarantine and hopefully get tested if they would choose to do that. So that's why there's not much data around our, you know, why do we have this spike in numbers? As Dr. Menz stated, we have the data that shows after Labor Day and after school started, all those numbers in every age group have increased, zero to nine varies minimally. The 20 to 29 is the highest, is the age group where the numbers have increased the most. It's really a pretty tight race between that same age group that we saw earlier that increased, the 20 through 49. So 20 to 29 was at least last Friday, when I got the data for the BOE meeting, the 20 to 29 was the highest, followed by 40 to 49, followed by 30 to 39. But very closely in that. So it's hard knowing what exactly that needs to be done. But we know that gatherings are occurring. There are event planners that are still really good about sending me their plans and calling. Visit Wichita is phenomenal with touching base on any event that they're going to have. But it's all the ones that people aren't. And I, you know, heard of a wedding recently where 250 people were in attendance. They're not checking. They're just having them. So it's events, it's, there's a lot of gatherings that are still happening. And again, we know that some of the bars are at full capacity. Some more information Tuesday.
Okay. Well, we look forward to hearing the updates and the information. It's kind of sad that they're not, so people are not cooperating when you're asking. So that's just the way it is apparently, right now.
And what Dr. Menz and I would really, and everybody would really encourage our public to do, to rally around this, is if they go into a restaurant and they see that their seating capacity hasn't changed, turn around and walk out. And get takeout from someone that is adhering to the social distancing and the masks, because there are a lot of restaurants that are adhering to that. And so support those ones that are.
Right. Okay. Any questions, Adrian? Thank you, Adrian. Appreciate the update. Okay. I think we're, Madam Clerk, next item?
Item B, Discussion of the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act.
Okay. Mr. Stoltz.
Chairman, today we, and this is the purpose of the special meeting, is to go through the CARES roll call. You'll have Brent and Lindsay will get up and speak. Brent will talk about a request for some external funding programs, which will require a vote from the commission. Then he will give an update on safe operating grants, which will be a receive and file. Lindsay will get up and ask for two specific requests from the arena, which will require two separate votes. So you have two votes coming there. And then she will give a receive and file update on the COVID spending status. So with that, Brent, you can start us.
Okay. Hello, Brent. Welcome to the meeting.
Good morning or good afternoon, Chairman Meitzner and members of the county commission. For the record, I'm Brent Shelton, your deputy CFO. As Manager Stoltz mentioned, we have two items today. The first one will be, require a vote. The second is just a receive and file. So the first item, dealing with the public health and social services agencies, allocations of up to $18 million. Since the last county commission meeting, our financial stimulus review team has met twice. They met last Monday in their regular meeting, regular meeting, and made three recommendations for a total of $54,640.46. Those were to three different agencies, and all of those represented additional funding to those three agencies from the original allocations that this board has approved. They met this morning at 9:00 to take up a special request from Ascension, specifically to meet some of those staffing needs that they articulated in the Zoom meeting that we just had. That request was for us to fund $1,680,222 for additional personnel expenses, specifically bringing in the traveling nurses to meet these staffing needs that they have. So the total stimulus review team recommendations before you today are $1,734,862.46. If you approve all of that, our remaining unallocated funds are about $4,225,000 out of that original $18 million bucket. So if there are no other questions, I would request commission approval of the award recommendations totaling $1,734,862.46, bringing the cumulative awards to
Okay. Thank you, Brent, for the update and, well, for this request. I did happen to watch the meeting this morning. It was very enlightening. I would comment that I really compliment how, especially on the Via Christi's request for the traveling nurses and all of that setup, how you guys did a real fine job of taking average, times average, times days, times months, times whatever it is, and got to a number that I thought the committee did a fantastic job of trying to make sure it was accurate within the rules of the CARES Act. So my compliments to that. And that, of course, that's the bulk of the request you're making today.
Correct.
I can let other comments, I'll make a motion that we approve the funding of $1,734,862.40.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any other comments? Being done. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Halt?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Okay. You're still up, Brent?
Okay. Thank you. And the second item is just an update for you to receive and file on the safe operating grant program. Those are the $5,000 grants. As we mention every week, those checks are going out on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And at the end of business on Tuesday, we were just shy of $2 million in checks that have gone out to businesses and nonprofits in our community. Since last week, we're, I guess I'll say we're hitting a stride. We're doing more than we've been doing each day. We're getting things processed quicker. That's attributable to some streamlining of the process, as well as additional resources that we have been able to put to this program. So we should be continuing to see faster turnaround in this program. Since the portal was reopened last week, we've received over 70 new applications. If those were fully funded, it'd be about $350,000, which would bring us up to $5.6 million out of the $7.5 million that was allocated to this program. We're also working with the state of Kansas. As you may recall, months ago, the state had a similar small business grant program, and small businesses were able to apply for grants of up to $20,000. They provided us with a list of companies that had made application for those grants, but were not funded. So we are, we've identified non-duplicative 219 businesses in Sedgway County that applied to the state that weren't funded, that appear that they could be eligible for our grant program, and we're reaching out to them individually so that, to make them aware of this program so they can apply. If those were all eligible and were all fully funded, it would be about another million dollars in safe operating grant funds that we can provide to the members of this community.
Hey Brent, tell me what, so the state could do operating grants up to 20,000 and we're limited to 5,000? Can you explain the difference?
They were doing, they had a number of different programs through their Sparks, that the Sparks Committee, they settled on that number. Our guidance was to be able to do them at 5,000 was safer for us, for the type of funding that we had through the Sparks.
Well, I appreciate you reaching out to the 219 that were rejected for some reason or another. So very nice.
I think they just ran out of money.
Oh, the state just ran out of money?
They just ran out of money in that bucket. And those were the ones that either didn't qualify, or the funding wasn't there for them.
Okay. Okay, very good. Okay, any other questions? I don't see any. Brent, thank you. I'll make a motion to receive and file the safe operating grant update.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. I don't see other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Halt?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Okay. According to my notes, Lindsay's up next. Is Lindsay here? Oh, there.
You are hilarious today.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Lindsay Porusso, your CFO. I have two items to talk with you about today. The first will be two arena asks, and then the second will be our normal spending status update. So the first item that we'll talk about is actually a mobile ordering system that the arena would like to install throughout their facilities. It would include all necessary hardware, including readers, servers, printers, kiosks, and video screens, along with software, so that once users submitted an order from their mobile device, an order ticket would be printed in the corresponding concession stand. When the order is complete and ready for pickup, in that concession stand, the program would notify the user that their order was ready, so that they would come and pick it up. So that would be installed throughout the facility for the arena bowl, as well as the suites and loge boxes. The work would be completed within 60 days. It has been reviewed by Whit O'Briens and has been determined to be an eligible use of CARES funding. The total cost would be $111,603. Sorry, with my mask, it's hard to breathe. So with that, I would recommend that you approve that ask for $111,603.
Okay. Any questions? I don't see any. I'll make a motion. Oh, Commissioner Halt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm just curious, this is preparations for Intrest Bank Arena, but we don't have any, is this for the tournament that's coming up?
It certainly would be used for the tournament, but because it is a requirement for CARES, it must be in use by 12:30. And so they would use this for hockey games. They would use this for the Wichita State game that's planned, as well as the bare knuckle fighting championship that's planned. that's planned.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve this requested $111,603.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's the motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. I don't see any other questions or comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners. So the next arena ask, also requiring a vote, again on things I have never thought I would have to talk about in my CFO role, we, they are requesting the installation of a bipolar ionization system at the estimated cost of $146,990. The cost includes the installation of 72 commercial industrial quality bipolar ionization kits on all air handlers, fan coil units, and blower coils throughout the facility. Not only would it be there for guests, but it would be also in the backstage dressing and locker rooms, concourses, concession stands, and stairwells. It would provide protection from bacteria, mold, microbes, and viruses in the air. Apparently, ionization makes it so that the virus comes together and is then trapped in the specific filters that are placed in the HVAC system. So it is becoming an industry best practice to install these. It's been done in a number of facilities throughout the country, and so our arena would like to do the same thing in order to provide that air quality experience for their guests. Again, the cost is $146,990, and I would recommend your approval.
Okay. Yeah, I think we've all been hearing and reading that this ionization is a, is a technology in the filtration system that's really proven to be very helpful. So, kind of surprised at building that size. The Intertrust Arena can do this for less than 150,000, but that's good. So I'll make a motion to approve the $146,990 as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any other comments? Being done. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. So now I'll give you the COVID spending status, and this is just a receive and file. So we'll start with the total COVID spending, including all sources, not just CARES. We are at $42,743,289 in terms of expenditures to support COVID-19 related activities in our community, and here also for the county. That is up 2.2 million over what I reported to you last week where we were at 40.6 million. A very small amount of that increase has occurred in the county general fund and the fire general fund related to personnel costs because payroll did post last Friday. Moving, though, to CARES spending, we'll first talk about the county bucket of CARES funding. So we are at $26,024,734, or $35, excuse me. That is up $1,339,535 from last week. A good significant portion of that is for personnel, $83,628 for temporary staff and associated benefits. Another $44,290 in that Family First Coronavirus Relief Act mandatory leave. You may note that that's up a bit over where we've been the last couple payrolls. And again, that can be used for childcare, that can be used for a family member or the individual person is ill. We are up another $500,000 in anticipated costs that have been set aside for contract for temporary staffing, mostly for the health department. $138,000 in costs have been incurred for cleaning services. $120,000 have been incurred for COVID-19 lab charges. About $147,000 was incurred in a joint request from the district attorney and district courts. They're trying to increase the level of staffing to resolve court cases that are pending, the backlog that you've heard about. So this would be an effort to bring in outside attorneys to help get those cases adjudicated quickly and moved off the books. Another $51,000 for marketing and advertising since we talked last week. $30,000 for hand sanitizer. $15,000 for the lease payments for the Epic Center for that overflow health department staff. And then some other miscellaneous costs make up that 1.3 million increase from last week. So then shifting away from county needs and looking at what we have funded for schools and cities, we are now at $10,042,785 versus the 9.9 million last week. I am excited to report that every last penny of the $5 million for schools has now gone out. So that is a flat even number, and that category now is complete, though we do still have some ongoing reporting that will be done for those folks. Of the cities, $5,042,785 has gone out. I'm also thrilled to say that the portal for reporting their information so that they can begin accessing their second round of funding is now open. So those will begin coming in. And I know Brent and the review team are working through the process of exactly how that will come to you for approval before those dollars are actually shared. So we started with $99,636,917. We have spent that 36.1 million. So we have $63,569,397 remaining, although again, almost every penny of that is spoken for. The only thing that we are looking at now is our testing allocation. We had about $20 million for that. And so that is something that we'll be working closely with Tim and his team on in the next couple of weeks in contemplation of any potential changes to your spending plan. So shifting then away from the county's CARES allocation and looking at the state Spark allocation to the county, again, we got about $9.3 million from the state. We are up to $4,887,434 from where we were last week. So that's up about $700,000. And almost all of that is for those safe operating grants, although the final portion is for the PPE kit administration now that that program is mostly complete. So then shifting to CARES HAVA funds. So we know that there are still some costs that have not yet been shifted to this funding source. We know that the installation of those ballot boxes all across the county, that cost still needs to come in. So we are at $341,361 of the $420,000 that the Secretary of State's office has allocated. But they are certainly anticipating being able to allocate every last one of those pennies as they start to see invoices. And then again, as we've done the last few rounds, though it's not CARES, we do have the Center for Tech and Civic Life Grant. We are at $519,220 of that that has been allocated. Again, that was an $816,458 award. A good chunk of that, of course, will be eaten up by the $2 extra pay for those employees who worked the general election, and that payroll just simply has not processed yet. So with that, I'm happy to try and answer any questions. Otherwise, I recommend you receive and file.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've voted to send $4 million out to WSU, and that is for our testing, and it's very important. And as our numbers go up, keeping kids in school and keeping teachers safe is very important. And so I just need to know where we're at on testing with WSU, because that's, that's been our ace in the hole.
Well, so on the $4 million, that was for the reimbursement of the actual equipment. So we are still working through with them to get those invoices on that. Now, in terms of actual testing services, I'll have to defer to Tom on where we stand on actual use of WSU for testing analysis.
Well, and with Tim not here, I'll do the best I can. At this time, we have an order in to WSU, and they're getting commodities in. They are working through some IT issues regarding tracking of sampling all the way, sample all the way through their system. So we're both, both sides are working as fast as they can to get the testing up. We were on a Zoom call with Mr. Schlapp on Monday. He indicated that they are almost ready. So we're hoping I'll get an update for commission and we'll keep you aware. But hopefully, within just a few days, we'll be moving, pushing all of our testing toward Wichita State.
Okay. Well, I'd like an update on where we're at with WSU testing as soon as possible. As I said, that is where I hope that we can start turning the corner. And until we've got that testing up and running, I don't know that we're going to get any better.
Very good, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now that the election's over, I'd like to get an update on the $816,000 from the Center for Tech and Civic Life Grant that we received. That money was used and equipment was placed in the county prior to the election. Can we talk about that?
I, I don't know if Tom has details. I can share that the equipment was purchased, acquired, and here for use for that election. The additional costs that are outstanding, the bulk is for that personnel cost.
Okay. I'd like to get a, I guess, comprehensive report on how that money was spent for the 2020 election cycle.
Sir, we'll have Anna and Tabitha remotely give a total update of election, and we'll make sure that they include that piece of it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. I don't see other questions. I'll make a motion to receive and file the, the update as presented by Lindsey. There's been a motion in a second. Any other comments? Being done. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell? Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Thanks again, Lindsey. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please. I think that, that's the end of item B, I believe. Yes.
Item C, Legislative Platform Discussion.
Chairman, while Akeem's getting the podium, we do have, as we discuss our legislative agenda, we have several staff on the phone today. Alora Forshi from 911, Glenda Martins from Corrections, and Joan Tammany from Calm Care. All of those department heads have items on the agenda that the commission may or may not have questions of, and so they are available by phone if you have specific questions for them. Is that Akeem? Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, manager. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Akeem Ashford, Director of Strategic Communications. Just to go over the legislative platform and kind of where we are at this point, I know we've had some discussions with you all individually, as well as with the manager and Mike, county councillor. And so today is really just kind of an expansion of what we've already talked about. There are a number of things. Kate just handed you guys a document. Many of you are familiar with this. And there are a few other items that you individually brought up that you would like to have on that legislative platform. And then we've got Alora, Emergency Communications, and Glenda on the phone as well. They've got some items that they would like to include on legislative platform for consideration today that you all asked for more information. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mike if you have anything you want to add at this point.
Thank you, Akeem. Mike Papoun, county councillor. The document you have that has the priority issues was just an attempt that Akeem and I had to show you something that might, we might look at as a little different this year. I know we've talked to all of you individually about some of your ideas for priority issues, and maybe instead of setting out each mental health or behavioral health issue separately as a priority issue, maybe have them bullet points under one issue. But that, that obviously is up to, entirely up to you if you want to do it that way. But those would be three, the three priority issues that mirrored last year. And if you, if you as a board want to add some more, we could use that guidance as well as what other issues you want on the platform this year.
Okay, well, I appreciate you kind of consolidating that into a more direct message with a, with a couple of bullets that support it. That seems to, to be a little more clear. I don't know. Other commissioners, you have any questions? Commissioner Dennis?
Well, thank you. I like combining some of this mental health, but what happened to our regional mental health facility?
I was talking, and Joan Tammany's on the line, I believe, and talking with Joan Tammany, and I know she's talked to Tim Kaufman. This year, I think with the state's funding challenges, I, I think we're trying to hold on to as much as we've already got and maybe get some other increases. And thought that this might be a little, might be a little ambitious with this legislative session, but we can certainly add it back, sir.
Well, I think it's still a very critical issue that we've been discussing for two or three years. Having it on our legislative agenda, even if it doesn't get funded, it shows that it's still something that we're concerned with. The sheriff's concerned about it. I'm pretty sure the DA is concerned about it. We've been concerned about it in the past few years. I don't know why we would drop regional mental health facility off of our list.
And sir, I wouldn't, I wasn't planning on dropping it off entirely. I was just, from the priorities, priority deal, but, and that may not even be appropriate. I understand what you're saying.
But I think it all affects item number one. I think there needs to be a fourth bullet under that that talks about the regional mental health facility.
That would be very easy for me to do.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. You know, I think the, the one thing that the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition, you know, we're trying to get some wins. And I think to our county councillor's point, is to get the wins this year that we could get. So the only thing that I think, and to Commissioner Dennis's point, you know, I, I think that that's a conversation that everybody is continuing to have. I think just because it might not be listed on here, everybody's still talking about it. But I think it's important that when we haven't been given an increase for the services that we currently do and we're at, you know, 2008 rates, it's important to understand that we need to get up to 2020 rates, first and foremost, for the services that we already provide. The other thing is, and I think Akeem and I, we had this conversation, and is just simply stating the language to fund a 4% increase. Fund our community crisis centers. You know, people can support it all day long, but we want them to fund it. So that's kind of where I'm at with the mental, or mental and behavioral health issues. I think that we want to get some wins, and we want to be specific. We want to know who's writing the bills. When do these committees meet? How can we be present in these conversations? Those, those are things that I think, knowing exactly what we need to support and laying it out here in a way that's easy to understand so that we can communicate these things to legislators this, this session is very important. I do have a question. I don't know if you guys want to move on to other things, but I did have a question about number three. I thought we had a charter commission, but the language is such that we will have to use Johnson County folks. Can you speak to that, or am I way off?
No, you're not way off, Commissioner. You could technically say that the county has the authority to have a charter commission right now.
Right.
But we'd be using a lot of Johnson County people for it.
So I think the language needs to be changed because we can create a charter commission, right?
Yeah, we need to create a Cedric County-specific charter commission. That's, that's probably, we can change that language.
So let's be specific as to what we're asking for.
And we, and we will, we have a bill that already went through the Senate last year. We are going to reintroduce that bill, prefile it again this year. And, but we will certainly make that more clear on the platform language.
Okay, thank you.
Point well, well stated. Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a comment, maybe a question here. But the ones that, the one, the items on here that require funding from the state, they're going to be very, very difficult to write those pieces of legislation and to, I guess, define exactly what we're asking for. Those are the ones that are the most challenging to see us pass on to the governor's desk. I do support them, but I, at the end of the legislative session, I hope we have a, a number of accomplishments we can be very proud of. And these ones that require huge amounts of money, they're very, very hard to pass. I'm not saying they're, they should be on the list, and they are certainly priorities. But to be honest with you, I don't, I don't know that I would expect to necessarily get a lot of these checked off by the end of this one session. It's just, it's just a very, very difficult task ahead of us. But the policy question, the policy, policy legislation is much more easy to, to pass. And a number of these things were raised when we had a, we've had a couple of meetings. I guess one was a staff meeting a while back. I think we actually had a BOCC meeting where some of this did come up in a BOCC meeting recently. I'm just curious, if those things are being taken off the list, I'd like to know why they're, why they're being taken off the list. Are we going to, are we going to have a discussion about them at some point and, and give us a chance to, I guess, to make a, a reason why they should stay on the list, or are they just off the list?
I'm unaware that we've taken anything off of any lists. I think the other issues I think the other issues, we still had, we wanted to explain some of the issues brought up by, like Glenda Martins and Alora Forshi, so they could, they could explain it. And then I think we need to talk about any of the issues that are important to commissioners. And I know that I think you had three or four, Commissioner Hal, and those certainly haven't been deleted from any. But we need to start refining, at least with regard to priorities, and see what we also want to add to the rest of the platform.
Well, you handed out a document, document here just a moment ago. Is this, are we anticipating this is what's going to be on the card we hand out and all the other policy, all the other legislative positions of Sedgwick County would be on a supplemental document we would not hand out? What are we talking about?
I handed out the priority issue. I don't know what else was handed. Did you hand out any?
No, sir.
Oh, okay. We need to come back to you with a more detailed list of the different issues that have been raised by the departments and by you to see what we want to include on the agenda.
Let me reiterate, I think in order for us to be really successful, and we've had some excellent years and our lobbyists have done a great job. And I know a number of us have gone up there and testified and lobbied for some pieces of legislation. I think we've been very, very successful compared to other governing bodies. I think we have, we really set that bar high for getting stuff done in terms of getting stuff through the legislature. And I'm very proud of us for the whole team, everyone involved in doing that. The strategy, I think, ought to be, once again, that we would highlight these items we think we're going to get done this session. And those items ought to be on a card that we would hand out, very succinct, very small. And we can hand it out often, elevator speech, as you pass them in the rotunda. You could, you can hand them that card. It would be in their pocket. They would, it would sit on their nightstand, it would sit on their desk. We could have the other items defined for our lobbyists and we could certainly articulate that, what are those other positions of Sedgwick County? And when those other items do come up, at least we know we're clear where we stand.
Sorry, I just asked a question.
And anyway, so again, I would like to see this list broken up into two documents. One would be the complete document that has everything on it that we agreed on. And the other one would be kind of this really short, succinct, almost a business card type of, or palm card type of file that you can hand out and hand it out often. So the items that belong in that short list, I hope that we have that discussion, you know, that we can talk about the strategy of trying to be successful yet again this year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. I wonder one thing that we could, last year, I had done some preliminary research on the Problem Gambling and Addictions Fund. That's a fund that's already in place. I wonder if we could lobby to have that fund specifically, you know, targeted toward maybe just gam, or excuse me, addictions in general rather than piecemealing it out for gambling. I know that it comes from the, our casino fund around the state. But I wonder if that would be a possibility of, since that fund is already in play, there would be a way to rewrite some of it, how it is allocated, maybe for behavioral health, since it's already in existence. And I know that it's been pulled from, from a number of years. So I'd like to discuss that and see if that could possibly be a win, if there's appetite for that. I know that I've, I've talked to a couple of legislators about it, just preliminary. But I think that's something that we could explore as a potential win.
I think when we discussed before, it was, I think the word they used was swept into the general budget. But that's a good, we could request something like that. I'd be supportive of that. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. I said this at the last meeting, I don't have the same vision that Commissioner Hal does in our palm card. I think that we need our priority items and list them as priority items on the front of that palm card. But our other items, I think, need to be on the back of the palm card so that a legislator will have all of the things that we're interested in on one short, sweet document that we can carry around and that legislators can see and that our lobbyists can hand to someone. If something comes up that's not on the front of that card, but it's on the back of the card, they know that we're interested in it. So I think we need to make sure that they know everything that we're interested in in a very short, sweet document that they have available. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I don't see any other comments. It's been a good discussion and continued directions. Mike?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just to help us formulate something to come back to you with, especially with regard to priority items, is it the will of the commission to include another bullet point on a regional mental health center, which Commissioner Dennis is asking for? I'm fine with that.
I, I'm sorry. You know, I think that we've got to not get hung up on what's on that card. I think that we have to be able to articulate our priorities in person via email, through our lobbyist. I think that if I had to guess, those cards probably get chucked in the trash. So I don't want to put, I mean, Tony, I think that you do a great job designing them. And I'm not trying to say that they're not warranted, but I think that it's important that we understand that what's on that, that piece of paper really has to be followed up with diligent conversations around what we're really trying to accomplish. So I'm okay putting it on there. I don't know that it's going to make that much of a difference if we don't follow it up, hammering these points home, driving to Topeka, getting face to face with those decision makers up there. So that being said, put it on, keep it off, but it's something that we need to talk about diligently every single time we talk about behavioral health in Sedgwick County.
Chairman, I've been listening to the conversation. It seems like we have two issues here. We have a structure issue of the card or the communication, however that looks. I do agree with Commissioner Cruz that structure has to be followed up by words. But we do need to agree, the commission does need to agree before we can go forward on structure. And I don't know that today's the day that we do that. I think we come up with some options and have the commission consider and ultimately vote on that. And then the real key is content. And to Commissioner Hal's point, there's a number of items. And I think at a future commission meeting, that we have a list of options ready for you and we drive those issues to vote. And the majority of the commission's items go on to the agenda. So I would like, we have a staff meeting on Tuesday. We have a special meeting next Thursday. We could be ready as soon as next Thursday. If, if all of you are, have all of your, if everything that you've wanted to say as far as agenda items has been said, then we can compile that into a comprehensive list and we bring that back to you. We'll provide it to you between now and then. But sooner or later, we have to drive these to vote so we can, we can get content done and structure.
Right. I think a comprehensive list is a good way to look at it and then we can size and downsize or format from there.
And I don't know what the constraints you have as far as time today, Mr. Chairman, but I could, and I apologize when I thought this had already been handed out. We can, I can make a copy of what was submitted by Glenda Martins, Alora Forshi, and the District Attorney and some other, oh, I think Commissioner Dennis had something about broadband access. I could have this copied for you very quickly. And I think that on the line, we could discuss some of these issues so we don't have to go back over that or we can put it off till a staff meeting. It's entirely up to you.
Well, if it's the will of the commission, is this a whole nother group of items we want to talk about?
Well, it was handed out the last time. And I can, I don't even need to hand them out. I could talk, like, emergency communications, supported reclassifying 911 dispatchers to first responders. I think Alora is on, on the phone. She can explain that issue to see if the commission has any interest in that. But, you know, when, when we go through this process, we ask department heads if they have any issues that are important to them for the commission to consider. And I think it's important to get that feedback, whether or not the commission wants to go forward with these issues or not, or whether they want to make them a priority, want to make them a secondary issue. But we've gone through that and I have at least three of those new issues here along with Commissioner Dennis's, ensuring all citizens have access to internet service, so.
Okay, Commissioner Hal.
Just to, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to make sure we don't forget the topics. We talked about mental theft database. Just to make sure we don't forget the things we've talked about before. We talked about mental theft, the database being funded. Talked about suspended driver's licenses, having a way to restore to at least a restricted license. That's a huge Sedgwick County issue specifically, it's for criminal justice reform. I personally would like to see us have a position, a policy statement, position on Medicaid expansion, opposition to that. And we also talked about property tax. Last year, they, they had a piece of legislation that was, really had a lot of momentum. And the only reason it didn't pass, I believe, is because of the shortened session. But I have no doubt Senator Karen Tyson, who got reelected, she's going to be prefiling that bill and it's going to be moving forward rapidly this year. I think we need to speak to it. And I would like to see, I would like to see the county support that because it's about transparency and accountability. I think it's, every taxpayer would love to know what's going on and it might cost us a dollar to inform them, but it's worth the money. And so I'd like to see us support that piece of legislation. So those are things, I don't want to forget them. They're, they're very important to me personally. And if we're not going to support them as a commission, I don't mind doing this on my own. But either, either way, I'll be up there supporting those items.
Chairman, I might make a recommendation just based on what Mike said. We could, between now and next Tuesday, come up with a comprehensive list. We can get all the people in the room or on the phone to answer any technical question of any singular item that the commission has on the comprehensive list and answer it then. The commission could leave staff then and we bring it back to the Thursday meeting where we actually drive these issues to vote to see what makes the list and what maybe is on the second sheet or, or not at all, depending on the will of the commission. I think we could, from a timing perspective, we could do that and it would give us a semifinal document by the 12th of November that Jason could see. And we could, not saying that we'd be locked into that, but we could continue to clean that and distill that, you know, for the remainder of the month. But I just propose that as, as an option. We can, I think the sheriff might want to weigh in on a few items. The DA might have a few items he'd want to weigh in and we could get them, because they are not present today. And we could at least get everybody on the phone for the staff next Tuesday and keep this thing moving forward.
Yeah, I would agree. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. You know, I've sat on a couple of different boards or calls this past couple of weeks with 50-plus mental health, behavioral health service providers in our community. And I'll just tell you, if this commission wants to put anything about mental health on our priority issues, we cannot put that we do not support Medicaid expansion. If we don't support it, fine, but you don't, I don't, I don't think it's wise of us to put it on there that we don't support it. So I will not be supporting that. I do agree with the driver's license suspension. I think that that's important. But I, I think, you know, the 51 people that were on our sequential intercept model training that the county put together with the Behavioral Health and Mental, the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition, all support Medicaid expansion. So the providers in this community would tell us otherwise. And I think it would not be prudent for us to put that on there.
Okay. Well, why don't we bring comprehensive and each of the items we can discuss as we, as we get to them with the appropriate people? Commissioner Hal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I won't respond to that comment about Medicaid expansion at this time, but I'll reserve those comments for later. But one, since you're, since you're taking notes right now, one of the other items we did talk about was, was a ballot initiative that would allow us to, to move contested races to the top of the ballot and uncontested races to the bottom of the ballot. I don't know about you all, but I, I did vote on the machine this year and I remember enormous numbers of pages. I had to vote for one person on a judicial race and then hit next page. I had to do that, what, 15 times to get to the next contested race. I, I think it causes a, it potentially is a reason that there's voter drop off before you get to those final contested races at the bottom of the ballot. And I think we can do better. So I've talked to the chairman of elections. He's actually excited about the idea. I've talked to quite a few other people, kind of other people that vet the idea. And there's a lot of, a lot of support for that type of bill. So I think we ought to keep that on the list. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any other comments from commissioners? I don't see any. So do we have any other business coming forward?
That's also a business that staff had.
Okay. Then I don't see any other business in front of the commission. So we will adjourn for the day and we'll see you at the next meeting.